The ordering, so it could be that, just in a staff 30, more orders going in. Okay?
Would any of the Reynolds accounted for anything like that, or it would have been logged to a...
Yeah, it would have been...
Project, okay. Any other questions, anything on the bill's provision? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
It's carried, thanks Eric. Okay, item number two on the agenda is a delegation, and we have the Redcliffe Action Society for Youth. Corey and Janey.
Hello, everybody.
Chris Corey, I'm the president of the board and directors for the Redcliffe Action Society for Youth. Janey Olberg is our coordinator, our project coordinator. Last year, I think it was last year, we made a proposal to see if we could reach a new agreement with the town council. Our agreement was established as far back as 2008, has not changed. It's 12,000 a year, and payments of $3,000 quarterly. That had not changed since 2008, and we would like to propose a new arrangement. We've worked very closely with Darren and Carla, and hopefully we've come up with a proposal that means the town council's approval. We'd like to see a baseline figure of about 25,000 a year to cover most of our operational costs that have increased substantially over that time period. And a backstop, I suppose, for those years that we have trouble fundraising to meet our operational requirements to help us through those years, which would be in addition to 25,000. I think the council has had an opportunity to read through the proposal and that sort of thing. Do you have any questions?
Seeing no hands.
No, quite no.
Well, I guess I'll ask, Chris, if if we don't approve your ask, what will happen?
Well, we could end up closing down. Right now, we're in a good position.
Right, because we see that on your balance statements, right now you've got 131.
As you see, our business plan, our years fluctuate quite a bit, and and we're just looking for some standardization to allow us to continue with our capability as we've now got it. We're in a good financial position right now, and I've no worries. But I don't know what the future holds, and when we do get down in our operational funding, we have no way of then generating our grants and that sort of thing. Our biggest concern is operational funds, because we can get lots of grants, but only a portion, or a small portion of it, goes to operational funding. We were very lucky in that we got our casino in in February last year, but we have no idea when our next casino will be, and that goes a long way towards our operating costs. I'd say we're in a good position now. I think 12 years of maintaining 12,000, I think it would be fair to at least meet inflationary costs, and that would just give us a better strength to our ongoing budget.
You mentioned that some grants allow you to put a small portion, and you mentioned it being too, what's a typical percentage that one of those grants will offer?
I think for the dinner program we got.
It all kind of just depends.
Yeah.
Anywhere from, I would say, 5% to 15%. There's certain grants, obviously, that are eligible just for operation costs, and part of the reason why our account looks so healthy right now is because we just received an operating grant through the government. Unfortunately, you're only eligible to apply every, I think, 32 to 36 months. So, yeah, it honestly just depends on the structure of the grant itself, but it doesn't come without trial and error, that's for sure. We're very active in our grant-seeking abilities. We're becoming more secure in our grant-attaining abilities. But again, it's never guaranteed, which is the unfortunate part, and now that Chris has said, we've come to a great place of sustainability. You know, we've been able to completely redo our entire center. We offer a lot of programs for kids, and we have a high number of kids that attend our center on a regular basis. COVID has greatly affected that. We're in the process of hopefully filing a provincial exemption, so that we can continue to provide in-house services for our at-risk youth, especially the ones that we're really concerned about. And then just moving forward, right, there's a lot of COVID funding that is still available at this time, but but we know, none of us know what the next three to five years are going to look like. And that's for you guys as well, you know, I know that funding can be really hard to move around and shift around, but I think that our community's youth, and I truly believe that you guys feel the same, is an essential part of our community, and it's a big part of our future as well.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Shawna.
You had provided us with a really nice little chart with a 2% increase from the year 2009 through 2020. So the 2% came to a total of 15,000, but your request is 25. So was the 15,000 plus a variance of 3,000, and then so how did you come up with the 25, being that this was...
Oh, I just used the 2% as an example, and...
Oh, that was just an example.
And we thought, when we looked at all of our operating expenses and that sort of thing, that 25 was about the right figure.
So you're shooting high and hoping for somewhere?
We got it.
Everything's negotiable.
And if you take a look at some of the charts, you'll see operational funds versus our actual income, and that 25,000 is about where we're fluctuating from, like, kind of where we're falling short in previous years.
And
Go ahead.
You had said that you had talks with Carla and with Darren, and what did those talks pertain?
Just a little bit of advice, I guess.
Advice and assistance.
Yeah, I've got...
They were a great help in helping us put it together.
Okay.
I've gotten quite close with Carla over the last little while that I've been at the center. I think she's a great advocate for the community in her role, and Darren as well, I think they do a fantastic job, and we've partnered on a lot of different events, and I definitely foresee the relationship building as time goes by. We've applied for a grant a little bit together, and that's something that will be continued on as well, hopefully, for the betterment of the community.
Darren, was there a recommendation from staff level on this?
The advice that we gave was to offer sort of a sliding scale ability. I wasn't so confident, or I was prepared to tell them what to ask for, so that's, that's... We had indicated that we need to show some sort of graphic, we did, whatever percentage we chose, so we didn't really have any dollars and cents assigned to anything, but I felt that some sort of sliding scale based on what they did receive from grant stuff or operational funds would be affordable, and then we wouldn't have to be giving out, let's say, more money than was needed. And that was sort of the only recommendation, really, around the dollars and cents portion.
This is just for information today, right?
Yeah, there's nowhere... I mean, that we're actually hammering out a proposal to change the budget, right? This is for information. And consideration and all that other stuff. We're not, nobody's looking for a motion.
Yes.
Yes, well, they are, but... Does anybody else have any questions? Go ahead, Kathy.
Since our budget was already been set, I don't know if administration has got any wiggle room if they need more funds this year. Would, any idea, Phyllis?
Your worship, so as always, you adopted an interim budget, so that can be amended at the will of council.
And I don't know what a sliding scale would look like. I'm just not the county.
Well, it just, what they proposed in here was what they thought would be great, and it would be great, is if council could make up the difference between their operations and their grant requirements as it goes, because your grants are fluctuating, so if we could fluctuate, that keeps them consistent, but that is hard for us to be budgeting at the same time, so... Unless we made some rule that we would budget up to a certain amount if there was a need, right? Because the sliding scale could work both ways, if they have a good year, we would not have to supplement them as much as they have a bad year, but then well, it, it, there's while that's one of their asks, that's not necessarily, well, I guess it's up to whatever council decides, but that's a hard one to budget.
Is there any indication that maybe the government will soften their view on some of these grants, and maybe see that places are struggling, and they could use the money elsewhere instead, rather than force them to use it for things that aren't needed for every day? Because that would certainly fix the problem if they would just change their stance on that.
Well, what I've seen so far, the government does is they've cut more grants than they've been leaning to on grants, like CFET. The town is no longer eligible, right, to apply for CFET, we have to use, they can apply for it, we can't. We can help them, but we can't do it ourselves, and then they got the big co-op grant, and that was all all capital expense, it was no operations, so...
That's not government-driven.
Right, but there's a whole bunch of grants that are like that, so I mean, I can feel for what they're doing, and and it's the same thing with other groups, they can get money to build things, but not maintain and keep it after it's up, and that becomes an issue. Or even our MSI, our operations got totally cut this year, right? And then next year, even the capital portion gets cut, so I think the federal and provincial governments are going to do some huge clawbacks after this is over. And we're not allowed to spend and run deficits like they are, so that puts us in a very squeezy spot.
Squeasy.
Squeasy, really squeezy, and it's not a good word, but that's what it feels like.
Words don't do is how much taxes do you want to pay?
Well, yep, it surfaces versus taxes.
I'll make the motion that we accept this for information. Further, that we instruct administration to amend our interim budget, allowing up to 25,000 for the youth center. Depend, I don't know if we can find it, but we can, we can look. We can look.
We don't want to sit up here and, you know, try to be gouging the town that's not at all, you know, what we're here for. We're just trying to provide a real safe place for kids in our community that really do need it, and we appreciate your time and consideration towards our request. And if further questions come up, you know how to get ahold of us, we'll be happy to answer them.
Great, okay, thank you. Okay, well, Kathy has put a motion on the floor, which is two parts, one is receiving and one is funding. I guess it's on the floor. Any discussion to the motion?
So instructing administration to try to find the money.
To see if, to see if it's possible that we can...
So how, how would it come back to us, like, if they, is it up to their discretion then? Can they say, "Yeah, I found it, here you go", or does it need to come back to us and say, "This is where I think I can take it from"?
That's going to have to come back to us, because we're going to have to amend our budget.
Okay.
If they can, if we can.
That I don't mind. Personally, honestly, they provide a valuable service that we need to keep going, totally on board with you guys. But they got money in the bank right now, I'm not sure, I'm too keen on trying to find money quickly.
Too.
Yeah. I would personally be more into next year's budget to try to find them sooner. So I think you guys are okay for this year, right? There's no worries of sustainability this year, so next year we may have an issue.
Yeah, because normally we just put it down to our budget sessions in October, but if you end up in an emergency situation, so to speak, now in October...
Then they can ask.
Yeah, and I hate to be the bad guy to say, "Well, you guys are good this year".
Well, by their numbers, they are good this year, because even their projection, they're showing a loss this year of a few thousand dollars, I think about 15,000, but with the 131 sitting in their bank account, they're still going to do okay. And I'm not, yeah, it is a...
We don't want to see you go anywhere, that's for sure.
We have, we find, like, Janey, we want to keep our original job.
Yeah.
Yours is okay, too.
So they support you, but we have to do a support statement.
Yeah. So Darren, I have a question, when it comes to FCSS money, is there a limit on what we can give to a single organization like themselves, because I know there are stipulations on how that money can be funded.
There's no limit, there's no... There's also a rule of issue money back in FCSS to add to this particular cost, if there is, if there is...
Right, because that's an 80/20 split. But on the other hand, if council saw fit to reduce some other FCSS fund, funding projects, that would free up FCS money for them. Because they are way more local than some other funds that we do.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I think, well, there's still a motion on the floor, but now it's been generalized to just start to look for some, right? You have to, what did she put down? Did you do a motion, Erica?
Investigate whether the interim 2021 budget can allow up to 21,000 for... Actually, I like that we're investigating.
Yeah, so it's going to come back to us.
Well, that's not a, that's not a committed motion, so that's safe, okay?
Okay.
Okay, because they're standing, and they're going to get tired sitting somewhere.
We are just happy to have you consider our proposal, you guys do a great service, okay, and everybody knows how valuable you are to the community.
Okay. All in favor of the motion? Opposed?
Aye.
It's still carried. All right, the investigation will start.
All right, thank you very kindly.
Thank you.
I still have my hand up.
Yeah, we got you, you just keep it up, it's good for your heart, dude.
Good night, everybody, thank you.
Good night.
You had a question, Chris, you had a question, Eric?
I did, I was just going to say I'm, I'm, I'm more apt to pushing it towards next year's budget, but, well, the motion was made, that's fine.
Well, Eric, I, if I, oh, there you go, you do have a yellow hand there, I'm sorry.
Where?
Down there by the E S.
Oh!
I see the little mitt, I'm very sorry, I keep thinking, it's good, my bad.
That's okay.
Damn electronic wizardry.
I was looking up a buffer, there's...
We gotta get that screen up.
I see his lighter hand, but that is kind of below my look. I have to sit up real straight to see that. Okay, let's move on to minutes. So we have council meeting minutes held February 22nd for adoption, Shawna. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. And the Town Redcliffe Library Board meeting held January 19th, 2021, for information.
Those.
Jim? Any questions or concerns? You weren't there, Jim.
I know.
Is there two Tracy's there now?
Yeah.
Okay. Just asking. Any questions or concerns of anything that happened at the meeting? So you think the 30% drop in numbers is just COVID?
Probably.
Because there's a little bit up in overdrive, but not near as much as down in the rest. So the curb side just wasn't, people just didn't use it as much?
No.
Good. Okay. All in favor, proceeding for information?
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. And Redcliffe and District Recreation Committee meeting held March 3rd, Chris. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Moving on to bylaws, we have bylaw 1920 slash 2021 being a bylaw to amend, bylaw 1358 slash 2003, First Avenue Southwest, 6 and 700 blocks, Storms who were project, and bylaw 1470 slash 2006 being a bylaw to amend, bylaw 1358 slash 2003. Larry, first reading? Any questions or concerns?
This was the land that was amalgamated into one parcel, correct?
There was a consolidation.
Yes.
Yes, so it's just being changed, because two parcels joining up mean a redo. Yeah. Good. Any other questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried, would somebody like to move it for second reading, Chris? Same thing, any questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried, would somebody like to present for third?
I'll do that.
Oh, Eric, must be unanimous to go for third. So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried unanimously, and would somebody like to move third reading? Kathy? Any questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Now, moving on for a request for decision, pitch-in week for consideration, Shawna.
I move with motion number one, that we support this week and offer free dumping. Along with that, can we have it advertised that the items that are free at the landfill be advertised at the same time, so that people can utilize everything?
Where would you advertise it, newspaper?
On, on our normal local media.
Oh, okay, sounds good.
Thanks, Chris.
That was a jab at the man.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I have one question. Mattresses aren't specifically mentioned in here.
Mattresses are specifically, so they were sold.
Right, but there, you've mentioned things that there are fees for, right? Somewhere in here, I thought there was. Some, you know, there was, some things would be free and some things wouldn't, and one of them, I thought, maybe I, maybe this was later on in the meeting then, or something. Because that, that'll be something that somebody would haul over there and then get upset about if they got free household.
Well, that's why I kind of said that we list what is free.
Or at least what better is what is not free.
It's right, what that general household waste or...
Right.
Yeah. Hard waste, yeah, tree branches and...
And would the compost facility be up and running by then?
No.
Okay, so no use separating grass and twigs, okay?
Some people might think that mattresses are household waste.
That's true, it's certainly something that council's in fear that we can include.
Not after seeing how much it costs to get rid of them.
Yeah.
That's where there's a...
Should be mattresses and furniture and everything like that not be included.
Well, I think furniture you can landfill, it's just mattresses you can't break.
No, no, not, like, the couch you couldn't, there's springs and stuff in there.
Anyway, yeah. Any other questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Moving on to policies, policy number 023 being our investment policy.
Approved, presented.
Kathy? Okay, any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Moving on to policy number 51, fire department remuneration for consideration, Shawna?
As presented.
Hey, I'm going to declare a conflict on this, because my husband is a volunteer fire, fire, so I'm going to step out.
Just one second, because I'm also on there, and that leaves 1, 2, 3, 4, so that's okay.
I have Eric here.
Yes, Eric is here, too. So Chris, you have to run the count.
Okay, do I take your seat down?
You can do it from your seat.
You can do it from there, good God.
We're right on there, don't we?
No, you don't.
Okay. Just me keep...
I need the motion.
Yeah, that's just me keeping track of who did what.
I'm just swinging the yellow. Any comments on the presented motion? I am seeing none, calling to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
And it has passed.
Kathy?
You heard everything I said?
Hold on, just a moment, close the door. So now that it's voted on, there were some policies that I made some notes on, and so I wouldn't have to remember them. Now I can't remember if this was one of them. Move it for yellow or little squares. But it doesn't matter, they were just...
Kind of wording of the bylaws?
Were just in, in sentence structure and things like that, so it wasn't, it wasn't anything that actually required great change. Doesn't matter, move on. So now we have policy number 65, or sorry, 85, highway and/or intersection inspection and maintenance for consideration. Would somebody like to put that on the floor?
Option one, please.
Jim? Does anybody have any questions or concerns? So, I did have a question on this, and obviously, when you make your list, Darren, that can't be accommodated in the budget, what do you do with that? Does that come to the next budget meeting, or? Because it doesn't really specify what it is, because we've got rid of MYCIP, right? We don't use that anymore?
So this will be my first year looking at this, and it was me that historically, but something would likely come back in the form of a capital request if we were getting something larger, I suspect, but I don't know. I don't know historically what we're going to raise.
Well, it's sentence six there that Erica actually has up there. Where it says the director shall maintain a list of all highways and or intersections to be considered in the annual capital plan update. When the potential repairs required exceed operating budget constraints, so. You know, if we're not going to have my SIP anymore, but we're still going to end up having a big list that's going to have to be brought to budgets.
Yes, so that'll be in the asset management program, that list will generate that.
Okay. I was just wondering how it would go, because if it just stays in the manager's desk.
No, it's just not named to my SIP anymore.
Okay.
It's still something to stay.
Right, any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
That is carried. And then policy number eighty six, computer slash mobile device policy for consideration, so this is the staff one. Chris? Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. And then policy number eighty six, no, sorry, policy number one, one, one slash CO two pipeline road crossing policy? For consideration. Shawna?
Being approved as presented. Option one.
Thank you. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried, and policy number one twenty nine, the code of ethics and conduct for employees for consideration.
I'll move that one.
Eric?
Option one, obviously.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or concerns? So I have a question. And I guess it pertains to I sit on two boards. And both boards have in their policy. When the issue is the boss, where does the person go? Right now, everything goes to supervisor or the C A O. And I think Eric and I both have experience with sometimes what happens when it's the C A O, what what do people do? So we actually looked into hiring an external outfit like human being human resources or something like that for when there are complaints. Or something with the C A O. So is that something that is important to have in this policy?
Yes.
Well, it's just like I say, it's it's something that on one board I sit on, it's been there forever. And it's actually because it's a board, they they send it to a committee of the board, but we don't have that either, so. Okay. I don't know what people charge to be kind of on standby or something for things like that, I have no idea. Because at the other board, we are just looking into it, so we don't have numbers either.
It's not a pay to play thing, it's they want.
I don't know, we're just looking, just because of stuff that's already happened, so.
We will look, sir.
Okay. So this can, I guess, be approved as amended or as changed, and if something else comes up, then well, it's just a policy. Yeah. Okay. Okay, so any other questions or concerns?
Dear worship? Can we go back to policy fifty one, the fire department remuneration? Um, we need an option.
So.
In the options, option one is approve option.
Shawna made that motion, so you say there's a mistake in the options?
No option is made.
Ah, when Shawna made the motion, did I thought she said one, but.
Darren, do you want to expand?
We just made clarification, so option one was chosen as the recommended last recommendation suggested, but inside option one there were two options for remuneration, two levels.
Ah.
So there was needed to be, are we selecting option one or option two to insert into option one if that's what I chose? So I unless I missed it.
Hold with with.
The deputy mayor has failed you.
We're talking money, I'm leaving.
All right, well, no, we have to.
Well, should we finish the vote, and we run, then go back to fifty?
Okay, let's do that, good thinking.
Good thinking.
Because that is right, we were almost near the.
Yeah, we were just about.
Hands up on.
Call both.
One twenty nine. So any more questions on one twenty nine? Not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Now you want to go back to policy fifty one because there were some internal options that had to be picked, okay?
Which page were those on?
She's got them on the screen.
Oh, right. Yes, it's going on. Okay, going back to that, which option would you like to propose? Shawna?
Um, hold on just one second, I want to look at this.
Basically, three dollar to five dollar pay increase.
I just want to see what Cypress County, if we go with option two, would that be more in line with Cypress County?
It was a little bit, I believe so, yes, the names are just across, sorry, up here, my guide down is here.
Yeah, there, there we go. So option two brings it in line with more with Cypress County, and that is what I would prefer. So option two with the approval.
So we're closer to in line, but still not quite in line with them. Still about eight percent behind them. From what I can see, no, some are definitely the same price.
So Darren, with option two in that, you've got a practice at forty dollars. And yet the practice that Cypress County currently has is twenty five.
Yes.
Why so much more for the practice?
Um, things are all over the board, Cypress County is is actually not as easy. The practices that they do versus the catalogs that have been jointly. It's really, we think these four, like when we go through the chief's at one, things are probably in place, so these are averages.
Great.
And so the forty.
I would like to bring us in line with Cypress County, going forward, if we ever were to amalgamate.
Right.
I think it is easier to do things together if things are more equal, if that makes any sense.
Yeah, it's totally up to your property, and if it doesn't make sense, that's the whole purpose of the way.
Right, right. So with that, with the practice, can we change that one number? And and even though that Cypress County is at twenty five? And right now currently we're at thirty three, can we keep that number?
Yeah.
But the rest change?
Yeah, you can amend it.
Okay. Everybody understand?
I do have a question.
Go ahead, Eric.
Um, it'll be an uh financial impact of ten, almost ten thousand dollars, is that my reading of this correctly?
That's correct.
And where will that be coming out of? Because it will be a budgetary item, right?
It'll arrive in the twenty twenty two budget for council's approval, this isn't going to take place until the twenty twenty two budget.
Oh, okay, thank you, that answers my question.
Okay, any more questions?
Is what does it do with our chiefs and all that stuff, is that bringing everything in line or just big practices and?
Uh, so this was only proposing increases for per call in the practices. So that's all you're looking at, the actual pay structures are next to impossible to.
Yeah, you can't you can't line them up because it's different jobs.
Yeah, there's part times, there's full times, and there's different rates, so we're leaving, we're not touching any of that stuff, we're only talking about the on calls and the practices.
Full time and part time, and how much time do you put in, and the size of the community?
The salaries are across the top there, you can see them.
I think what was concerning to me was the wording that we bring ours up to the Cypress County thing. But we're only bringing portions of it up.
Just two pieces of it, right?
Okay, any more questions? Okay, I'll call the vote, all in favor? And opposed? Eric, can you hear us?
Sorry, I had you on mute, I'm an aye.
Okay, very good, it has passed.
Thank you, thank you.
Free notes for option two, remain an adjustment.
Okay, glad we can know that. Okay, you're done with that, and I'm glad Erica is going to figure out how that went down. So moving on to number seven, correspondence, we have a letter from Alberta Municipal Affairs. Read the twenty twenty one budget. Shawna?
For information.
So the big news for that is we get more than normal for M S I this year and considerably less for the next two. And by then they may have a go forward plan, or maybe not, but that's that. And we lose our fifty thousand dollar operations.
And we lost our TVs.
We lose our screens?
No signal.
Nope, nope, they're on. It's his fault, okay? All right, then we have correspondence from Alberta Municipal Affairs regarding. Oh, you're right, I didn't, why is that the same, that is the same, that's if it carries. All in favor of receiving the letter?
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Alberta Municipal Affairs Minister Awards for Municipal Excellence Submission, so you have to. Jim? Okay, if anybody has any wonderful ideas that we did, just bring them up to amend.
We survived twenty twenty.
Everybody did.
No, not everybody.
Okay, all right. Anybody have any questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried, and Alberta Municipal Affairs read disaster funding changes, Larry? Any questions or concerns?
Thanks for coming.
Evil.
God see that. So they discussed this over their town hall meeting, and it's not in effect yet, but when it if it if and when it does come into effect. Disasters will be one only, and they're also going to hold the municipalities responsible for ten percent of it. So makes for interesting, not really what we're used to, but they compare it to some other provinces. And even as a homeowner, then you're only going to get it once. For people that have been flooded out two or three times, that will cease and desist. So you have a choice to move or figure out a way to pay yourself. So that will be one way that they figure they'll be able to save some money too. I just thought that was interesting. Okay, so any questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried, and Westlock County, concerns regarding proposed changes to the Alberta energy regulators? Nice throw in an acronym. Chris? Moves for information? Any questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried, the Palliser Airshed Society, the January Station Summary Reports for information. Jim? Any questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. And the municipality of Croson has passed, read the A U M A President Summit on Policing for Information.
Sec information.
Kathy? Any questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried, and the New Horizons Senior Grant, twenty twenty to twenty twenty one for information. Jim? Seeing how you wrote the letter. Seeing how you wrote the letter.
I didn't write the letter.
So she did. I thought your name in there somewhere, saying you really needed it badly.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. And the A U M A R M A Policing Summit for information. Kathy? Any questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried, personnel update for information. Larry? Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
That is carried.
Um, two questions. One, Phyllis, do you have anything that you want to add or point out?
Yeah, um, so the only other item that, well, there's a few things. Uh, one of them is that we've received an signed agreement for the water allocation transfer. Uh, so it's ready for Dwight's signature, and then um just wanted to review the questions from counselors and provide the same information to the rest of council members. So the M S I funding uh for twenty twenty one. The provincial government increased the amount of funding to municipalities to one point one nine six billion dollars per capital. That is going to be reduced to seven hundred and twenty two million for twenty two and twenty three. Preliminary estimate for the town of Red Cliff is one point one five two, with three hundred and thirty six from the M T G for a capital component of approximately one point five. There have been some indications that the funding formula may change. And normally the province posts the anticipated allocations for the next few years, and that is not the case in twenty twenty one. The provincial budget, um, we had been told we would get our local government fiscal framework. That's supposed to be put into law in twenty twenty one, and that's been postponed till twenty twenty four. Uh, the other items from the budget, the A U M A has concerns with the opioid crisis in the province. Uh, it was reported there were nine hundred and ninety seven deaths in twenty twenty and about the same amount of deaths as in COVID nineteen for the same amount of time. Provincial budget selections, there will be a set of vote and possible multiple referendum questions attached to our local elections this fall. The province identified ten million dollars for this, and we're not sure how we're going to access or what our portion might be. The recycle depot has been delayed due to storm water management concerns and conformance to the land use by law, and this matter is scheduled to go to N P C in March. Uh, councillor had received information that administration had lost all the paperwork for the dirt trap, and that's not the case, the meetings are ongoing. Uh, information was found on how we could have change, how we could have the proposed school change from a middle school to seven to twelve. Administratively and politically, meetings could be requested to see how the school board feels about the change, and then council would need to see if it's how big of a strategic priority. and then council would need to see if it's, how big of a strategic priority it is for them. Council, uh, Land Use Bylaw enforcement, we've been hearing since before I arrived that the Land Use Bylaw would be updated. Last week, staff met to discuss what areas needed change, and parking and signage were identified as priority areas. Portable signage in the downtown core was identified as something, uh, better to be considered in the Community Standards Bylaw, and we intend on having the first draft in front of council in the next couple of months. For the Land Use Bylaw, the goal of the staff is to have a new, modernized, updated, illustrated, easy-to-understand Land Use Bylaw.
Like I love the name, so.
Here in my path.
In the simplest.
FCSF, uh, there's a tax-free program through the library, and that's, uh, so easier for, easier for volunteers. Uh, fire, I was asked if I was where the fire chief was away, and no, I wasn't. And then there was some discussion on termination, determination of an employee in a volunteer fire department with the town. And over my years in government, I have received conflicting information from both municipal affairs and the federal government on if volunteer fire is considered to be employees of the town. And the best way of making this determination would be to obtain a legal opinion. And development, we had a question regarding the greenhouse property that is listed for sale, and an estimate from the town for a deposit of a hundred fifty thousand dollars to utility hookups, and this is third or fourth half. And further research from staff, we could not confirm this importance for this property. And then, I had a question this morning about the mayor's emails. You're spreading gossip again. He wants us all to do something for him.
Yeah.
And I've checked with ID, and there is nothing we can do.
Well, it comes from, like, when, all you have to do is look at the sender, it's not me.
Yeah.
Like, I, when Eric sent me that, I looked at who sent it. It's some President Seven-Nine-Zero guy. Well, that's not me. And, uh.
Will you do me a favor?
That sounds just like me.
Please do me a favor.
Yeah, see, that's already not how I talk. Go ahead, Kathy.
It's just with the new policy, and when I was reading the policy fifty-one, and then you go to the MGA, and then you... Nobody's ever given us a definitive, what is an employee of the town? And in the policy, when I read it, it uses paid volunteer. What's a paid volunteer? And let me use this word salary. So, I would suggest, or I would make a motion, whatever, that we get a legal opinion to put that definition to bed. It's been bouncing around as long as I've been on council. And when you get a, uh, when you go to AMA, one answer. You go to the books, you get another answer. I, I wanna clear up that confusion.
So, this was back to what Phyllis was talking about? This was one of the questions?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other?
I have two.
Go ahead.
So, the other question was, and I'll direct it to Darren, whatever happened with your talks with the city in regards to the lights? The lights? The ones that don't work? You said that you were in talks with them.
Well, for changing the, um, the way we pay.
Yeah.
Well, that's gonna be, nothing they could, nothing that they were able to do this year, for this year's contract, but it is on the ICF discussions. We'll, we will come across those.
Okay, so it's still coming forward?
It will, yeah, they're looking at trying to do something for twenty-twenty-two, suggesting that maybe there could be a, an addition of a municipal rate, because right now, we're just considered a commercial customer.
Right.
So, that's what, that's as far as I've gotten, and I left that long list.
Okay, so it was still open?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Just love those.
Right, okay, good, thank you.
Any other questions?
Kathy? Just to get back to my question, do I need a motion, or do we need a consensus of council?
Motion, please.
Okay, I will make that motion.
Okay.
To get definition of a.
To get a legal opinion, what constitutes what?
Specifically the fire department?
Yeah. And pay, like, it just loops back on itself.
What's considered?
What's considered an employee, what's considered a volunteer, what's a paid volunteer? That's almost like a double negative.
Obvious.
Yeah.
When does a volunteer become an employee?
Yes.
I wonder if we find out they are not a volunteer fire department, I wonder if that would affect our insurance for the city, for the town.
I do know that communities that have paid fire departments, breaks a little bit better than communities that have volunteer, but then you get into the.
Paid-for-services.
They have to be on-call at the hall, rather than on-call at their homes.
Right, maybe that's the definition.
I don't know. That's why I'm... Run around in circles enough. I want a definition, a legal opinion.
I think, sure, I think it's, I'm actually gonna get muddy even more than this right now. Volunteer is a volunteer, and a paid volunteer is a...
Is a what?
Is a paid-for-service volunteer.
But as soon as you get paid, is that a salary?
Yes, it is.
So, how can you be a volunteer and be paid? It's not making any.
Not, yeah, you're right, it's not a volunteer, then.
Yeah.
You volunteered to go to work for money.
That's not a volunteer. As a paid employee, sorry.
Volunteers here too, then.
So, that's where I think we need opinion, just to, just to clear the air, put it to bed.
My concern is, if they are employees, it's going to open up the whole thing for benefits and all in here.
Well, then is it a contract employee? We need to know. We're not experts in the field.
Tell me if we're gonna do, do we still do it legally?
It's gonna be interesting to see what happens.
Because we have a town policy, right? It's not AUMA, it's not legislation. We have a town policy. Because otherwise, it doesn't matter. Because there are mayors that are fire chiefs in Alberta. It doesn't matter. Just.
In some documents, it doesn't matter, in other documents.
Well, no, it, it doesn't matter, I don't think it matters in the LGA, or the MGA.
Yes, it does.
Why is that?
In the MGA, it states in there that a fire chief cannot be, uh, that America not be a fire chief.
It states that?
Yeah, or a member of council cannot be an employee of the municipality.
Yeah.
So, I want.
Well, then how does that happen?
I don't know.
Luckily, it can.
Because some people just.
Maybe.
Close their eyes toward it, I guess.
But maybe they're fire chief, but don't take the wage for a fire chief. Like, they just have the title and the job, but don't take the wage.
But I think it's just, I think it's more, people just turn blind eye to it.
Okay. All right. All right, that, so now there's a motion on the floor?
There's two.
Two motions?
Yes, I made one, and Kathy made one.
Okay, what did you make?
It's a receipt for information.
Yes, that one that we have, but she then made a motion in the middle of all of that.
Yes, we didn't finish the first one.
Wow, it's kind of stirred up from inside the information. So, I think, let's work on Kathy's first.
Okay.
To get a legal opinion. Okay. Everybody sees that? All in favor, or sorry, any questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried, or sorry, there's, it was unanimous, so it's carried. And then, any more questions on manager report? If not, all in favor, receiving for information?
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Okay, landfill grass.
See for information.
Kathy? Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. And council important meetings and events? Shauna?
For information.
Any questions or concerns? Somebody knows of dates that aren't on there? All in favor?
Aye.
That is carried. A short recess. Five, six minutes. Okay. Oh, y'all in favor? Opposed, that's carried, he's got his mic off.
Sorry, I'm here.
Yeah, it's okay, yeah. I didn't ask you before we started, Eric. You are in a room all by yourself with no other big ears in.
That is correct, yeah. I am in an office by myself.
Perfect, with your headphones on.
No, it's, I'm by myself.
Oh, all right. Okay. Project matter.
Okay, uh, I'll make the motion that we authorize administration to prepare town logo options, east side division naming options, and rebranding options with prep, with money to come back. What's that? Oh, no logos? Okay, to authorize administration to prepare east side subdivision naming options for consideration.
That'll work. Okay.
So, this is not a rebrand?
Pardon me?
So, this is not a town rebrand, this is an east side question?
Yeah.
Yeah, an east side name instead of a direction.
Okay, thank you.
And?
Would we just want?
Was it Prairie View was the most popular? Is that the one? Or? Is it, well, there was some Prairie Views, and then you had a little point.
A little point.
I, I know where east side is, I'm good with that.
Okay.
Next, we know, never mind, really.
All right, well, as long as we all have a interest in it, okay.
Don't try and find it from Costco.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's carried. Okay, development matter. I would like this recorded. Okay. Okay, now you, now you can make the motion. Ca, Shauna? What motion are you making?
Motion number one, to authorize administration to prove a letter intent of purchase.
Okay. Option one. Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Opposed?
Nay.
Nay for me, and that's carried. Okay, item C, development matter. Shauna?
I would like to move that administration look for a piece of land for them, and to continue on with a lease agreement, to see if there's something suitable for them.
Okay. Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. You don't need a motion for that one, so then, motion to adjourn. Jim? Any questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried.